Mr. Mayor, confirming that we're now recording.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Shane, and good afternoon to everybody and welcome to the council meeting of the 28th of July 2020 for Georgetown Municipality. We'll commence with our traditional acknowledgement of country to get proceedings underway. Georgetown Council pays its respect to the traditional and original owners of the land in which we meet their elders, past, present and emerging, and we pay respect to those that have passed before us and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal people who are the custodians of this land. Present today, the Deputy Mayor, Tim Harris, say good day, Tim. Thank you very much. Councillor Greg Dawson, give us away there, Greg. Councillor Justine Brooks, there you go. Councillor Peter Parks, Councillor Andrew McLeto, give us away of Andrew. There we go. We have Councillor Winston Mason, Councillor Chris Barakoff, and Councillor Heather Barwick, who is not using her video, but-
Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate that. Apologies in the absence. We have none today. Oh, sorry. I need to also welcome the staff. So, welcome to, obviously, the General Manager, Shane Power. Give us away there, Shane. Everyone knows who you are. We have the Manager of Corporate Services and Finance, Cheryl. I can't see Cheryl. I don't think she's on yet. We have the Manager of Works and Infrastructure, David, down the bottom. G'day, David. The Manager of Development and Environment, Rex Cassidy. Rex is a great Rex. The Manager of Livable and Connected Communities, Megan Bennett. Hello, Megan. And the Manager of People, Performance and Governance, Brent Day. Okay, thank you. The item two on the agenda is the section for the confirmation of minutes. Item 2.1 is to confirm the minutes of the council meeting held on the 23rd of June, possibly before we commence. I will get to you immediately. In fact, let's just go straight to Councillor Barwick. Councillor Barwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move the minutes be accepted with an amendment to the minutes as they stand. And the amendment is at item 13.5 of the previous minutes, which I have to find to make sure I did it right, wording right, 13.5. And that is where it refers to an adjournment. So I'd like to move that the minute three, the adjournment was called seeking confirmation, so that Louise can write it down, I'm sorry, seeking confirmation of time limit allocated to questions from a councilor under the local government meeting procedure regulation 2015. Speaking to that, Mr. Chairman, under legislation of the local government legislation, 13.6, council has to, and not name why they have gone into an adjournment. So it's just actually putting the reason for the adjournment as that regulation suggests that has to be done.
Councillor Barwick, with your permission, if I could suggest that you may make the minutes, the change a little bit broader. I'm happy with what you've got, what you've got there, but possibly a little bit more accurate would be to say that the meeting was to seek confirmation of a meeting procedure because there was a fairly broad discussion not related to that.
No, Mr. Chairman, that is not actually what I intend to have changed because on the paperwork you have at that last meeting, and I will quote, that you said that you were going to check that I had, was only entitled to have five minutes allocation for questions, and this is what you were checking up. I don't want to go through all of that. I'm just using it by saying that I counsel you, you're doing a council's amount of questions because it is on tape. And that's what you checked out. So just saying that.
I'm fine. We can capture that one point. No problem. Okay. So then do I have a second there for the motion, Councillor Barwick? I hope the second there is Councillor Parks. Councillor Barwick, is there anything else you want to add?
No, thank you, sir.
Anyone want to add anything? Councillor Brooks?
Can I just clarify whether it was that you sought, was seeking advice about the time, five minutes, or was it the amount of questions asked? I, my understanding was that, see, this is the thing. I thought the clarification you were seeking was about how many questions a councillor could ask.
That's right.
It was quite a bit broader.
Not the timeframe, Councillor Barwick, was my understanding.
Yeah, the five minutes, it says five minutes allocations of questions. That's the statement made by the mayor.
That's fine. It's your motion.
Well, that's a statement that was made and I've got off the tape.
Okay.
It's fine. I was just asking a question. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sorry, I kind of got lost there. Winston? Councillor Mason, sorry.
Is it confirmation or was it clarification?
It's clarification.
Not confirmation.
Councillor Dawson?
No, I think Councillor Park seconded it. So he should have been the next one to speak.
Thank you. Sorry, I got lost in the argy-bargy there. Peter, would you like to say something?
I think Councillor Barwick's just trying to, the meeting regs say something about having an explanation. There was no explanation. I think that's all she's seeking. So, that's fine with me.
Good. It would be adequate to just say something like, seeking clarification around meeting procedure, but we're a bit more granular here. That's fine. All right. Is there anything? If there's no one else who has a question, Councillor Barwick, do you want to close?
Nothing more to say. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll put the motion to, or vote all those in favour of the accepting the minutes with the amendment. Please raise your hand. And we have everyone. You know, Councillor Dawson, would you be accepting the motion? Not. So we have, you are with, okay, so we are unanimous. Thank you. The minutes are accepted. Thank you. And I'll note that the amendment does not have a substantive effect on the discussion nor on the decisions made. So happy to accept the minutes and then make the alteration as indicated. Item three, late items, we have nil. Item four is public question time. I'm not going to review the process, but in short, there are questions with notice, questions without notice. We have an existing protocol in COVID times, so members of the public can submit these questions. There are timeframes established, seven days being the one for questions on notice, and basically a day for those without notice. We have one question, excuse me, on notice, item 4.2. So I'll read the questions from, did someone say something? No? Okay. We had one question from Mr. Philip Hawkesley. He says, "Most, if not all, constituents living at Bellboy Beach are concerned at the escalation in speed on the Bellboy Beach Road. Increasing residential and construction traffic is using this road as the area becomes more developed. Numerous vehicles from other areas are attracted to Bellboy Beach due to the dog beach at the end of the road, along with the growing volume of sightseers visiting this locality. A number of children live and play in the area. Native animals are being killed on this road almost on a daily basis. Speeding vehicles swerve to avoid broken asphalt. The road does not have footpaths, so residents must walk on the narrow road to get to the beach or to visit neighbours. Although signage may assist, this most likely will not be adequately pleased. Therefore, a two-pronged approach must be considered." So the first question is, will council consider a reduction of the existing 60 km an hour to a 40 or a 50 km an hour in the Bellboy Beach area in line with most other similar communities? So I'll take that as question one. And number two, will council consider the installation of strategically placed speed bumps on Bellboy Beach Road? And so, Mr. Hawkesley, I'm going to pass to the General Manager to talk about how state growth governs speed limits and what we can do constructively in this situation. Over to you, Shane.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And we'll certainly respond to Mr. Hawkesley formally as well, and we can include that response in the next agenda of council as well for purposes of minutes. And we do have the Manager of Works Infrastructure here with us today as well as required. But essentially, council will need to gather some data through traffic monitoring and data collection to be able to formulate a reasonable argument or merit as to whether or not speed reductions and any other, you know, speed control devices such as speed humps or other engineering controls are in fact warranted for that area. So that's the first part of the procedure, but I'm happy to hand over to the Manager of Works Infrastructure if further details are required at this point.
Over to you, David. Are you on?
I'm here, David. I think that pretty well covers it. There is a requirement to undertake extensive community consultation as well if we, if we are planning at all to add things like speed control devices, et cetera. So there's quite a bit of work that needs to go on behind the scenes before we can progress this.
Thank you. And from an overall sort of mentality point of view, it's councils' culture to be data-driven before making any of these infrastructural decisions. So I think it's highly appropriate to get some clear data on traffic movement, speed, et cetera, et cetera, so that we can really make a call on how to prioritise and how to move forward. So with your persistence, we'll start at the start. We'll get some counters down and we'll move on from there. Thank you for your question. Item 4.3 is public question time, and we have two questions in today, both from Mr. Glissom from Lowhead. Apologies. So the first one is Mayor and councillors. And the question to the July ordinary council meeting is, can you please explain to the ratepayers of Georgetown why the councillors failed to utilise Section 76.1b of the Local Government Act and in doing so save the ratepayer more than $200,000 in legal fees and charges? Clearly, in the case between the council and self-proclaimed whistleblower, Mr. Graham Nielsen, the cost of recovery is more than triple the debt. Council claims that Mr. Nelson owes the ratepayers approximately $60,000 in legal fees and charges are now more than $200,000. If this is considered in tandem with the advice received by council from its legal advisers that Mr. Nielsen is imprecious to the claim of council, then Section 76.1a should also be considered. So, Mr. Glissom, I think you recall in previous meetings, I stated that council will no longer be devoting any resources or time to this particular issue, given that it is a substantive legacy issue and there are still proceedings. This question as well has actually been asked before, and I'll just point you to the minutes of the March council meeting of this year, if you want to recount the previous response that was issued. And we will also be responding to you in writing. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Councillor Brooks has her hand raised.
Councillor Brooks, apparently I didn't see. Councillor Brooks, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask through the chair a question to the General Manager?
Yes, you can.
General Manager Shane, can you advise us whether or not that advice from our legal advisers about Mr. Nielsen being imprecious was a private confidential matter? Or was it released to the public?
I'd have to take that on notice, Councillor Brooks, if that's okay, and come back to you. It may, in fact, predate my time here, but certainly our advice at the moment from the lawyers is proceeding cost recovery is a valid exercise.
My concern, I ask my concern is that a person who was a previous councillor may have used that information, afforded to them as a councillor, inappropriately, and I'm just wanting to follow that up if possible.
I'll take that on notice if I can through you, Mr. Chair, and come back to council with that.
If you would, please, Shane. Deputy Mayor, you have a question?
Not a question, but maybe a piece of information on what Justine's just asked.
Yes.
I'm pretty sure that Mr. Nielsen declared in public open court during question, in public open council, during question time, that he was imprecious and could not pay the bill. That was self-proclaimed, not done by anybody else. So I'm not sure that it's actually a legal situation that is proper. So I'm pretty sure that was done under his own volition, not under the recommendation of an accountant or a lawyer or whatever. And it was done in public question time in house.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy. I'll take one final question. Councillor Mason?
I was in the question that he was bankrupt.
Right. Okay. So it was on public record. Thank you. The second question from Mr. Glissom rees, beg your pardon. And this relates to the minutes that we just ratified and the amended motion from Councillor Barwick effectively confirms the same thing, but I'll read it anyway as the requirement. Question two is page 48 of the council agenda has a section of the minutes of the June meeting of council reports that the chair adjourned the meeting at 2:15. For a short break resuming at 2:20pm, the chair resumed the meeting at 2:24pm. Local government regulations, section 13.6 clearly states that the reason for the adjournment of a meeting is to be recorded in the minutes. I'm listening to the recording of the meeting. It seems that you are unfamiliar with the meeting procedures and the regulations. I need to get advice from questions being asked by a councillor. My question is, what is the reason for the adjournment? Why was it not recorded in the minutes as required by the local government meeting procedures regulations? Councillor Glissom, that has been corrected in the minutes as indicated by the previous motion from Councillor Barwick. Thank you. Good question. Section 4.4, responses to questions from previous public question time, there are nil. Item five-
Mr. Chairman, I have my hand up.
I beg your pardon, sorry.
Can I, I'd just like to, if I may, I'd like to congratulate Councillor Barakoff for his recognition as IGA's Man of the Year in Tasmania, for work, for the work that Chris has done in our community and especially over in New South Wales when the fires were on. Chris will, now that he's been nominated as the Man of the Year for IGA, he will represent Tasmania at the Australian IGA Awards later on in the year. Chris, I wish you well and congratulations on the job. Well done. Thanks, mate.
Thank you, Helen.
Likewise. Safe travels. Wear a face mask. Congratulations, Chris. Well done.
Well done, Captain.
Thank you.
So I'll return back to the agenda. We have declarations, declarations of interest. And item six is the General Manager's declaration. Duly noted. Item seven, as a planning authority there are nil this meeting. Item eight is the Office of the General Manager. And item 8.1 is the draft Georgetown Municipality Community Strategic Plan for 2020 to 2030. This is the embodiment of a significant piece of work and some consultation expertise that council sought in developing this document. I note that the recommendation, the officer's recommendation is at the bottom of page 12, if you're working from the printed notes. Can I have a move for the recommendation? We have Councillor Mason. Thank you very much. We'll have a second there, please. Councillor Harris, thank you very much. Councillor Mason?
Thank you, Mayor. The strategic plan is a 10-year plan. This one runs from 2020 to 2030. It was put together, a lot of consultation from elected members in the council staff. I think it was the three workshops involving councillors and management, plus input from the World Cafe, and key stakeholders in the community, plus some data collection from the Future Impact Group. Also, I went to the general public, the feedback from the community. I think they received three submissions which were considered incorporated in this draft document. I'm quite happy to move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you kindly. Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to echo the words of Councillor Mason. A significant amount of consultation at all levels has been put into this, and a significant amount of work by our staff has contributed to this. And it's a pretty big document, mind you. It probably also is not set in stone, but quite viable for the possibility of changing circumstances or influxes of grants or whatever. So I dedicate this to be passed into the council and look forward to some of the results of this 10-year plan.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will just open it to anybody. Questions for or against anybody who wants to speak? All right. Well, I'll, I'll just briefly just echo. I think I couldn't be prouder of what we've produced. And I believe that this document really does paint a compelling vision for what we want to be as a community. I acknowledge it is ambitious, but I believe without big goals and big ideas, we will, we run the risk of floundering and not testing ourselves in what we can become. I strongly endorse what's been done, and I'm very proud of the work that's been created. Thank you. Councillor Barwick, your hand raised?
Thank you, sir. I do have a question and possibly an amendment. My question is, the draft Georgetown Municipality Community Strategic Plan has always been known as the Georgetown Council Strategic Plan. I can understand it being called the Georgetown Municipality because it encompasses everything. But my question is, the word "community" strategy. There are a few people that have made comment that, well, the council never spoke to me about it, and I'm part of the community. So my question is, why we have that word "community" there? I'm quite happy with it being the draft Georgetown Municipality Strategic Plan, which involves everybody, and thus specifically just say the municipality and the community. Why do we need both? That's a question that I'd like to answer before I maybe move an amendment.
Thank you. So through the chair, I'll pass it on to the General Manager, Shane. Over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll answer that question in twofold, if I like. For so first one, you had some commentary around some community members saying that they hadn't been consulted or hadn't been spoken to in the development of the plan. And I have to concede that no matter what we do in terms of, you know, community engagement efforts, we're not going to capture everyone. That is just a reality of the exercise. Nonetheless, we have thrown significant resource at this particular development or this particular strategy, commencing way back when in the World Cafe, in which we had hundreds of people come through, and then extended beyond through the consultants, engaging in out-of-line communities as well as the Georgetown area, directly and indirectly, through also other survey results and other data collection exercises, in tandem with other groups such as the Future Impact Group, which is, leads me on to talk about why community is involved or community is incorporated into the title of this particular document, as opposed to just being a council strategy. And that is for a number of reasons. Is one, and obviously council represents its community. And if you look at the future directions, and I commend council on what they've done today in shaping this document, the future directions are all around community. So the first one is community pride. Second one is prosperity for all in all aspects of life, you know, progressively well-resourced communities, and of course, leadership and accountable governance, which is specific to this organisation. But when you're looking at prosperity across all aspects of life, you're talking about health and education measures, not just economic measures. And council can't be responsible for this plan, even though it's a vision to achieve a prosperous community. So particularly in a smaller resource organisation such as ours, it is absolutely critical imperative that we partner with other stakeholders within the community, both with formal and informal acts, to, you know, to help realise that prosperity for all. So I really commend council on where it's got to today. I think the leadership in this space is really, really shining through. And we have built some really key partnerships with community and other organisations that have gone a long way to making Georgetown Municipality a prosperous place. There's a lot of way to go, but I think this is key to the making that a success. I hope that answers your question, Councillor Barwick.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. GM. The other question is, I do realise that, and it states here, we, we are a month behind because normally the strategic plan and all these are done prior to us setting our budget, which then makes me question whether or not I should move a motion to retain the current Georgetown Strategic Plan up to 216 to 224. And the reason I ask that is, that is current as it stands at this moment and would cover us through till the next financial year, which would then give us going with this whole new documents which are going to go from 216 to 230. It does have that as an option in this document, to be able to currently stay on the 216 to 220. Now, whether my putting a motion forward to do that may be the way to go, because when I look at the recommendation that's just been moved, that recommendation says, "Adopt the draft Georgetown Municipality Community Strategic Plan 2020 to 2030 as presented." And then it says, "We are accepting something that is not finalised or completed," because it says, "Noting design still to be finalised." So, look, I will move a motion that we retain the current Georgetown Strategic Plan as it is unless the mover of the motion previous, which was Mr. Mason, will stop the recommendation he's got as presented, not have noting design still to be finalised. That's something that can come back to us later.
So, Councillor?
Can I have a response to that?
Yes. So before you move your motion, let's please seek a response because my understanding is the content is substantially finalised. It is purely the cosmetic design and presentation elements that is open. So the substantive content is immediately binding. It is immediately relevant, and there will be no subsequent changes in that content. Mr. General Manager, can you just confirm and comment on that? Because I really don't think that there is a need to retain the old policy. We can-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And there's a couple of things in that. So in terms of process, the Local Government Act requires that council review its strategic plan every four years, and this is meeting that legislative requirement first and foremost. The option here to retain the existing 10-year plan is if council feels that this one hasn't been accurately representative or consulted or for whatever reasons, it feels it's not a valid document to move forward with. Go back to the other one, noting that it has conducted a review and it feels that the old one is still sufficiently representing the community now and into the future. With regard to the process of the budget, you will recall last year that we moved the budget prior to the annual plan being adopted. And that process is simply because a budget informs what can and cannot do in an action in an annual plan, because you need budget to actually implement the actions of the annual plan. So the process, I'm satisfied, has been done correctly, and the budget informing your strategic and ensuring on your plans. But you are right, Mr. Mayor. What we are asking of council today is to endorse the content of the strategic plan. Once endorsed, we will then hand over to our graphic designer to then make it into a, you know, to go along with all of our other recent corporate documents that council has, you know, adopted in the past and presented in the past.
And the goal of that is purely to just make the consumption of the strategy plan easier for the general public in terms of images, graphics and presentation layout. So again, I certainly, I'll just urge you, Councillor Barwick, I don't believe that it would be necessary to deviate from officer's recommendation. I mean, it is your right if you want to do it, but I think the point's been illustrated that it's both compliant and it's consistent with what we discussed prior. So your call.
No, that's fine. I just needed to ask these questions so that I get the satisfaction to make a decision. to make a decision and have a proper understanding of why we're not going down the other track. And I'm quite happy about that.
Good. I'll just note for the record that all members of the council were presented with this document in workshop. It's been extensively consulted with all members of the council. Councillor Brooks, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. I wholeheartedly support what our General Manager has just said about incorporating community in the title. I think that's wonderful. I think that the task, the plan aims to conduct in combination as a coalition, in collaboration, whatever word you want to use, with the community is fabulous. And I think it's wonderful that we're heading this direction. I really applaud the General Manager and his officers and whoever else had input into it. My question though is, on the day that we were consulted, I raised an issue with the word municipality. I indicated to the General Manager and the consultants that under Part III of the Local Government Act, we are no longer municipalities, we are municipal areas under Section 16C. And I requested that someone contact legal to confirm that that was accurate or not. Did that occur?
Through the chair to the General Manager.
Yes, it has occurred through the chair. Municipal area is the preferred use, but in this particular instance, we can change it, but it hasn't got a bearing in the effect of the document. But you're right, when municipal area is the preferred terminology.
That's acceptable. Any further questions, statements?
Through the chair, should councillor Brooks be moving that we use the word municipal, sorry, the municipal area word, and do it now? Because you are going to go back and get your designs finalised, et cetera. So the wording should be done at the same time? Up to councillor Brooks.
Look, I think that it's a moot point. I think the General Manager has acknowledged it. He's had that discussion, he's sought clarification, that will be passed through to the document. Again, I'm comfortable that if we vote on this, we can empower the General Manager to retrospectively amend it as appropriate, as is the requirement of local government. If they've got a specific terminology they want to use, then we should fall in line. So I'm comfortable with that. Are there any other speakers? All right. With that, I'll hand it back to councillor Mason to close.
Thank you, Mayor. Some good discussions around that motion. It's really now up to, after all that work, it's up to the General Manager and his management staff to do it again and make it all work for us.
Thank you. I'll put that to a vote. All of those in favour of accepting the officer's recommendation on item 8.1, please raise your hand. We have four, councillor Harris, Keizer, Dawson, Brooks, Parks, Micalotto, Mason, Barrack, and Barwick. The item is unanimous. Thank you. And congratulations, Shane, and your team. I think that it's an exciting and compelling vision. I think it's something that the community can be quite proud of, and I'm excited by trying to put this into effect. Item 8.2 then is the ensuing draft 2020-2021 annual plan. And I will note that the officer's recommendation is recorded on the top of page 15, which is to adopt the annual plan as presented. Do I have a mover for this item, please? Councillor Mason, thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Parks? Councillor Mason?
Thank you, Mayor. The annual plan comes out of the strategic plan. This is a plan that's put together by a lot of hard work. There's a lot of finance, there's a lot of planning, there's a lot of infrastructure projects, economic development, tourism enhancement, cultural awareness, all part of the annual plan, and it goes on and on and on. The annual plan also establishes performance measures for councillors and council, which are held accountable. And it demonstrates the performance of the council in spending the right person's money. It is also a statutory requirement that we produce an annual plan every year for the municipal financial year. And I'm quite happy to move the recommended motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Mason. Councillor Parks?
Thank you, Mayor. I think councillor Mason's probably said it all there. It was a well-talked-about plan during workshops, one that we had a chance to have input. Perhaps anything I would say is, you know, it's a difficult time for everyone in having a forward-thinking plan as the GM and the team and the community's put together here. I think we've all got something which we can be proud of and look forward to. As you've already said, Mayor, I thank the team for putting this together. I think it's really well done considering where we've come through and where we're going to. So, yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Parks. Anybody questions for or against? Go for it. Councillor Brooks?
Just a similar question that was asked to the last item, given it's just waiting on design finalisation. I think your words were, "No subsequent changes to any content", is that going to be the same situation with the annual plan? Nothing will change in the content, it's just purely the layout and design that will be finalised?
That's correct. The content will remain the same. You may see some graphical representation of content rather than the content itself. But if there's any substantial or any significant deviation from what's in there, it will require a motion of council to change that. So you'll see it very much in line with what last year's publication was like, which did have some graphical representations.
Thank you, GM.
The content will remain the same.
Thank you, Shane. Councillor Barwick?
Just a question. A copy of the annual plan, it says it's available for public inspection at the office. So it's not available to anyone that may come in and get our agenda to have the annual plan, the strategic plan, and that document to be able to take home?
Through the chair to the GM?
So we do, we make them available for inspection in their final publication, if that makes sense. We can provide copies at a cost, which is prescribed under the Local Government Act. There's a fee attached to that. The copies we leave available for inspection are the final professional-bound glossy versions that we only have a limited number printed for distribution to various parties, politicians, et cetera. So we will have them available for inspection, and if anyone in the community requests it, as we can, provide them at a fee as prescribed to the Local Government Act.
No, that's fine. I just do know that we, many years, we used to have documents and documents sitting in boxes that we purchased and never handed out. But at the same time, do we supply this annual plan in full to the community groups in the country areas or not? Or are they the same? They come in, have a look at it?
So through the chair, we haven't given them copies in the past, well, not since my time directly. What we have done though, is when we have met with various progress associations through the roadshow or other forums, we've taken copies with us. We haven't taken them in numbers, but we've taken a copy or two, along with the annual report and council's strategic plan, and in the right forums, council's advocacy plan as well. We haven't been overwhelmed with requests for them, but if we were, we can leverage the fees within the Local Government Act to do so. But I dare say, in the, you know, going off previous requests, we could provide printed copies at no cost. But I'm only going to say that in the proviso, depending on how many we get requests. But I suspect we don't get many.
Okay.
Of course, through you, Mr. Chair, there are courses of copies available, or will be available on council's website as well.
Thank you. Councillor Dawson?
General Manager has just answered the question. That's all good.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll call for anyone else before I hand it to close. Councillor Mason, if you can close, please.
Nothing further. Thank you, Mayor.
With that, I'll put that to a vote. All those in favour of adopting item 8.2 recommendation and accept the 2021 plan as presented, please raise your hand. And I believe we are unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item is item 8.3, and that refers to acknowledging the recording of the council workshops for June and July. And we will move them all in one motion.
I'm delighted.
Thank you. So councillor Barwick, do I have a second? We have councillor Dawson, just to mix it up there a little bit. Thank you for the others. Councillor Barwick?
Nothing. Just received the report.
Thank you, councillor Dawson. Anything to add? Thank you. Anybody who wants to say anything? Okay, councillor Barwick to close. Nothing. We'll put it to, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. And we are unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Item 8.4, this relates to the placemaking committee and a project approval, which is most exciting. And the officer's recommendation for this item is printed at the bottom of page 20. Can I have a move of that, councillor Parks? And I think we had councillor Barwick there. Thank you, councillor Barwick. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate all assistance. Councillor Parks?
Yeah, I think, thanks, Mayor. I think everyone wanted to vote for this. It's a wonderful thing. I mean, there's been a lot of work done. You know, when you visit other places, you look for that character, that quirky thing, that's something to show the kids and the family. And this is going to be one of those wonderful pieces of community artwork that we're all going to be, you know, saying to friends and family, "Go check these", I think it's a wonderful thing. Another drawcard for Georgetown. Wonderful. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. Councillor Barwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually going to ask a question as well, but look, it speaks for itself. There's been a lot of talk with different meetings with Justina talking to us as a, sorry, councillor Brooks talking to us, her role in the placemaking committee. It is exciting. There's lots of things that are in the pipeline there to be addressed. But what I would like to ask too is, I did notice, and whether any other councillors noticed, but the officer's recommendation has, yeah, that council by absolute majority, there are two items on this agenda that now stipulate that. So at this time, maybe the General Manager can explain to us why we have that council by absolute majority has to do this through this document of the placemaking committee. I automatically thought, and I should never automatically think, that the $50,000 that was in last year's budget would have tracked the crossover into this year's budget because it wasn't utilised and it was for a specific item in our budget last year. And I just thought it would have gone automatic. But now I'm going to ask the explanation as to why we now have an absolute majority decision here. Thank you.
Through the general manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Barwick. In the body of the report, under the statutory requirements, I've included there that a council, under Section 82 of the Local Government Act, that a council may alter by absolute majority any estimate referred to under subsection during the financial year. And a council adopted its budget last month, which didn't include this $50,000 provision in that budget. The reason it wasn't carried as is practised with other projects, is that the $50,000 allocation to the placemaking committee was in the operational estimates or the operational budget, and the funds being sought to fund this project is of a capital nature. So we didn't want to, I suppose, confuse or complicate the budget process that the council had endorsed last month, but rather break it out separately for consideration in this month. And as I've just said, it's a requirement under the Local Government Act for an absolute majority to make that happen.
Thank you. Any further questions? Comments? None? Let's put that one. So councillor Parks, would you like to close?
No, I've nothing to add yet. Thank you.
You're right. We'll put that one to a vote. All those in favour of accepting the item as listed, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. Thank you very much. Right. Item 8.5, item 8.5 talks to the proposal for developing, or the proposal for creating the Georgetown Reconciliation Action Plan. And the actual recommendation of that item is recorded at the bottom of page 24, and the recommendation is to accept the proposal from reconciliation Tasmania.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before you call for a vote, it was, and I just apologise, I haven't communicated this to date, but it was a question around how the local Aboriginal community would receive reconciliation Tasmania in the development of the rap, if council does ratify this recommendation. I can confirm that I have spoken with representatives of local Aboriginal community who would be happy to, and have actually asked if they could work with reconciliation Tasmania and council, should council move the officer's recommendation today.
Thank you. That's helpful, Shane. I appreciate that.
Apologise, I didn't mention that earlier, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's fine. I got that before we made any decisions. That's the key imperative. So with that, I'll ask, is there a mover for this, please? Thank you, councillor Parks. Do we have a second, councillor Dawson? Councillor Parks?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think this is a really exciting step for the Georgetown council. It's a small step, which is going to be an exciting journey. I know some feel, I guess this can be a bit polarising or not understanding why we need to perhaps have our own reconciliation plan. But I think, as we spoke about with RCTAS and in workshops, that this is important for our local community. The local community are excited, a little bit nervous about coming out and talking about their culture, and I think this will help form that pride again around being an Aboriginal person in our municipality. I think there's lots of exciting things that we can value add to this process as we develop the plan. It's really exciting for our region to, again, be proud of that culture. It is a long, many thousands of years old, as we know this culture. And to add that to our European culture, not to take away, but to add to it, I think it's exciting what they can bring for us. You know, it could bring jobs for Aboriginal people, it could bring tourist ventures, it could, you know, there's a whole myriad of things which this small step, a reconciliation plan, can start for us. And I'm excited for it, and I think other councillors can see the value, the real value in that for us. And most importantly, above everything else, for our Aboriginal people, this is actually a wonderful and exciting thing for them. You know, you can't undervalue that. So thank you for the GM for pursuing this. Thank you to the councillors who've talked to me about it, and I recommend it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parks. Councillor Dawson?
Oh, okay. Councillor Parks with words. We saw only a few years ago the start of this reconciliation process down in Hobart. There was a communal walk across the bridge with the Aboriginal community and all other aspects of our community that walked together across the bridge to signify, you know, that transition, I suppose. And this is, I suppose, an opportunity for us to create that bridge ourselves. We come in from the past and what was and where we were at, and the probably the injustices that have happened to our Aboriginal community in the past, to get us to a point in the future where we're all together and hopefully respectful of each other. So if we can use this as the foundation stone of that and move things forward, I think it's a fantastic opportunity and I would support it.
I'll first call for any speakers against the motion. Our first call for any speakers against the motion. Councillor Harris?
I'd like to question what's been written in the start of this. I thought it was a letter of Marana people that we were actually dealing with, not the Palau people. Are the Palau peoples generally the whole of the state, or is it just the southern? Because in, on your second paragraph, under background, home to the Palau peoples, I thought it was a letter of Marana.
Through the chair to the general manager.
And my understanding is that the Littomerana people are part of the Palau peoples. So the Palau is more broadly defined as a larger region in the Littomerana, but I'm not going to profess that I'm an expert in this area by any means. There are a number of nations and tribes, et cetera, that make up the local landscape.
We're in the south of the state.
So just to interrupt proceedings, Louise, if you can just recall that councillor Dawson appears to have left the meeting. Thank you. Sorry. Please continue, councillor Harris.
And the only other thing I'd add to that, Mr Mayor, in response to that is, I'm sure we're going to learn a lot more about our local Aboriginal history, the demographic regions in which they, they all, I suppose, traversed and existed. So if we go down this pathway.
Thank you.
I think it should be the correct pronunciation for the local peoples. And we're not doing it on a statewide basis. We're doing it for the local people. So that should be addressed at least.
Thank you, councillor Harris. I have councillor Barwick who has her hand raised.
Look, I agree with what councillor Harris is saying, and the Littomerana people were the ones that were up on Mount Direction as well, plus down here in Georgetown. And we talk about our, our, our. Our Aborigines in our municipal area, not the south, as it's taught here. But I'm a little bit wavering with this motion. I would prefer to have seen this taken up twelve months down the track, which would allow for us as a council to do some consultation and education of our commitment and the community, with the community about going down this reconciliation, reconciliation plan. We did, when we first had our discussion, use the words that, look, it's a bit early, early yet, let's look at it in the next twelve months budget. But somehow it's got its way into the, into our budget this year. And I'm a bit torn whether or not, there's no, this needs a lot more consultation going out there into the community. And just not this council pushing it on, onto people without having that word of consultation going through. So I'm not real sure I support the motion as it stands today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. So I have a queue. So first, we've lost our normal structure and rigor. So we've got three people ordering, wanting to speak, and I'll follow that by myself. So we'll first go to councillor Dawson, then to councillor Micaletto, then to councillor Mason, and then to councillor Brooks. That's the sequence of people who've indicated. So councillor Dawson, and just help me, I sometimes forget the order. So just call me up if I get it wrong. Not intentional. Councillor Dawson, over to you.
On the second, so now I'll probably raise my hand to let you know that I was back in the meeting, but other than that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Micaletto then?
Yeah, I guess from the onset of all this, I sort of had a mixed feelings about the, the way things went. And I'm not talking about reconciliation itself, but the process. And, you know, I was always of belief that I think that the federal and state governments should have implemented some sort of a plan themselves, which then the councils would build off and structure them to their, their communities. However, I guess, like, how I feel is that basically we're putting the cart before the horse. However, based on, you know, how quickly the, the state and federal governments work on things like this, I think probably two to three years' time, we'd be still sitting here and nothing would have happened. So I think we probably do need to take the horse by the reins. And in the better interests of the community, we probably do need to start pushing ourselves and implement this plan through the individual councils.
Thank you, councillor Micaletto. Onto councillor Mason, then I will speak, and then we'll hand over to councillor Brooks. Councillor Mason.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm very pleased to support this initiative. Having grown up in Georgetown, I grew up with most of the Aboriginals. They're always friends, and they still are friends. Seventy years of age, they're still around, they're still friends. And I think this will stand the council in good stead. Because it's going to happen, whether it happens now or in five years' time, it's still going to be a good initiative. As a council, we should lead from the front. Not only on this, on all aspects of the community. Try and lead from the front. Show as an example for the rest of the state. If it became a government-funded organisation, not local, we'd put $20,000 in and we'd give $5,000 worth of value. So I think we should look after it. If we put the money, we handle the money. This has probably been fifty years in the making, this reconciliation. The amount of money involved is a very, very small feat for past seasons. So I'm very happy. I hope this gets up to that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mason. All right, I'll say my little bit, which is absolutely, wholeheartedly endorse and recommend this course of action. And the point is that we may have things wrong. But this is a process that will allow us to correct what to do, which tribes, how to have dialogue, how to acknowledge people's preferences, their history, their traditions, and be inclusive. We're effectively giving a voice to people in our communities who really haven't had that acknowledgement before. There's no harm in it. I also want everybody to really be objective about this. This is not taking away. This is not de-emphasizing anybody's history, whether you're of European descent or whether you're of Aboriginal descent, whatever your descent is. This is about adding colour to our collective community and giving everyone a voice. It's about inclusion. And I am incredibly excited by what we might achieve, by what we might discover about each other, and how we can support this journey. And, you know, every long journey starts with a single step. And I think that this would be a great first step. So let's do it. Councillor Justine.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I too wholeheartedly support this and am quite excited about its commencing. And as a placemaker, I see that this will, you know, for this community, it will create a shared sense of place through equity, inclusion, and the provision of opportunities for all, all of our community. And I think by endorsing this and commencing this journey, we're actually sending a message to our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in our community and all community members, that we are committing to work together in a spirit of trust and openness to bring about hope, healing, love, justice, and peace in our community. And that we are, as a council, acknowledging and respecting their unique cultures, histories, and spiritualities of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people. And I, you know, I, I couldn't support it anymore if I tried. So yes, I can't wait for it to start and be involved. Thank you.
Are there any final speakers before I hand it back to councillor Parks to close? Councillor Harris?
That's why I asked the question, ma'am. Has there ever been any intention of just speaking with our local people, like as a collective of a council, with our local Littomerana people? This doesn't seem to have skirted around them quite considerably, rather than actually us going to the source. Like, we don't really know how well the people from reconciliation Tasmania get along with these people. We've not had any discussions with them really, as a collective. And I would much prefer to be able to deal with our local people prior to dealing with somebody who's an organiser on a statewide basis or even a national basis.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr General Manager.
It's a difficult one to answer in that respect. And what I would say is that we've had reconciliation Tasmania, not only in front of council, but also in front of the community over the many months since I've commenced. They've been here on a number of occasions. And as I have said, I have spoken with representatives of the local Aboriginal community around their relationship and their feelings towards reconciliation Tasmania as a body performing this work. And have got confirmation from they're actually keen to be part of that process. So by way of that indication, I can only infer that they're satisfied with those that are involved in the process. In terms of local Aboriginal community, the local Aboriginal community here identify Aboriginals, they necessarily identify as Littomerana. But nonetheless, a local Aboriginal community.
Thank you. I'll take the question.
Don't identify as Littomerana.
So they might not necessarily identify as a Littomerana for, for reasons I think might be obvious, but nonetheless, they're still Aboriginal.
Okay. With that, councillor Parks, I'll hand it to you to close.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And a great conversation and debate there from all councillors. I think it just goes to show that we have a lot to learn during the journey for ourselves, but it's important to start that journey. And as most have indicated, who know those families and those individuals in our community who identify as Aboriginal, this means a considerable amount that my words are never going to properly, properly say in this forum. They, they will no doubt be on the forefront and be a part of these groups going forward for that community consultation. And very proudly so. And hopefully, we can assist that in a continuing journey, not, not just this first step, but have a natural plan for the future where we incorporate the culture into the community in a respectful, in a respectful way. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Parks. And with that, we will put it to a vote. All those councillors in favour of accepting the recommendation, please raise your hand. The councillor Keizer, councillor Dawson, councillor Brooks, councillor Parks, councillor Micaletto, councillor Mason, councillor Barracklaugh. All those opposed, please raise your hands. We have councillor Harris and we have councillor Barwick. The motion is carried. Thank you, councillor. Item eight point six speaks to special committees and the refresh of our policy that governs special committees, as well as a minor amendment in this refresh process. The recommendation is at the top of page twenty seven, which is that the council accept and adopt GTC sixteen, special committees policy, which will be effective on the 28th of July. Do I have a mover for this recommendation? Councillor Mason, thank you very much. And seconded councillor Brooks, thank you. Councillor Mason?
The ready for this motion is that the, it's added that, there's a new one required. It is contentious templates to assist in the governance of committees from idea to inception, including monitoring and performance. And I'm quite happy to move that we adopt Georgetown Council sixteen special committees policies procedures and templates, effective 28th of July.
Thank you very much, councillor Brooks.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I endorse it too. It's always, as a chair of a special committee, and I'd like to see more special committees. Hint, hint, councillors. It's always good to have policies and procedures to fall back on when an issue or something pops up and you need to go and see what do we do in a certain situation. So I'm really appreciative of the GM being responsive to questions and things that I raise on occasion. And some modifications to this policy are in response to some things that I've raised, and I appreciate that. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I may, I'd just like to pose a question to the general manager. I know that we have made a modification which effectively outlines a procedure for special committees who potentially want to remove a member of a committee. Mr General Manager, can you confirm that in the event that a committee does seek to remove a previously appointed person to one of those committees, the ultimate decision will be made by the council? Not necessarily the acting chair of a committee? Can you clarify, please?
I might actually defer the questions to Brent, who's developed the full suite of documentation. It also accompanies the, the policy, if that's okay for you.
Thank you. Over to you, Brent.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the final decision rests with council for appointment and, and removal. The policy outlines the actions required of a committee in recommending someone to council for removal or the chair recommending someone to council for removal. It outlines a process for a person who's been recommended to make a submission to council for consideration prior to any decision being made, but ultimately, any decisions remain with council.
Thank you very much. That's sufficient. Any other speakers? Councillor Brooks?
Mine's more of a question if that's appropriate, given I, thank you. And through the chair to, to the officer, if that is appropriate as well. I'm not sure if this is too late for me to raise this, and I apologise if that is the case, Brent. My question would be, is it worth considering another option too for removal? That if someone with apology or without apology doesn't attend X amount of meetings? But even if they've given an apology, but if they continually give an apology and don't actually turn up and are productive in the committee, would that be considered an appropriate trigger also, in your opinion?
So the way it's been written, it gives a framework and a scope for committees to establish in their terms of references, what would be appropriate for the conduct of their committees that may trigger such clauses, noting that all terms of reference will ultimately need to be adopted by council anyway. So the framework provides scope for that to be able to be achieved based on how the committee develops its terms of reference for endorsement by council.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was helpful. Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Harris?
Even with issues like non-attendance, it shouldn't still be up to the, the chair of the committee. It should be brought back to the council with notification of the non-attendance, and the council should still be making decisions, as they are the people who make decisions to appoint. Is that correct, is it? Brent?
Yes. So if, for example, in terms of reference, had that being as a reason why that committee might recommend someone for removal, that would be a trigger for them, at which point they would then recommend to the council that this person be removed for whatever reasons. And that decision would be council's.
So the ultimate decision would still rest with council again. And I think your point is quite right. You know, all matters of both appointment and suspension dismissal, I don't know if the correct terminology, would rest with the council as it sits here today. Any other speakers, questions, anything before we close? None? Okay, we'll put that back to, gosh, my handwriting is terrible now. Is it councillor Mason? I think he moved it, didn't you, Winston?
I did, ma'am. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll fix my terrible handwriting here. All right. In that case, let's put this one. We have a question from councillor Barwick. Are you saying you're supportive, or have you got a question?
You were going to put the, the motion and I put my tick after, sorry.
For action fast, I didn't want to presume. But all those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. There we have everyone. So it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item nine, development and the environment. There are nil this month. Item ten, works and infrastructure. There are nil this month. Item eleven, corporate services and finance. Item eleven point one is, yes.
Mr Mayor, if I may, the decision being sought from the officer isn't present in the agenda there. So if I threw the chair and. isn't present in the agenda there. So if I threw the chair and agreeable to council, if we could the decision being sought by the officer is incorporated into the summary. So if we could, through the chair Louise, copy that text from the summary and drop that down into the officer's recommendation, which is what we're seeking to be a motion of council, being that council endorses the annual report
of the audit panel for 2019, 2020 and the audit panel annual work plan for 2020, 2021.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, just waiting for Louise to catch up, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay.
In the interim, while, and we have a second from councillor Mason, thank you very much. It's a delight for the both of our representatives on that panel have been both mover and the second.
There's nothing further to add, Mr. Chairman. It's just to endorse and receive our annual work plan for the next 12 months.
Thank you. And I'll just quickly add to say that, again, Cheryl and the extended finance team have opted to bring the audits early this year, which means that they are truly under the pump in both closing books and prepping for audit in record time. But that's a tremendous proactive mindset. I highly recommend and commend Cheryl and team for the proactiveness that they're demonstrating and wish you luck. I'm sure we're in tremendous shape.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just Louise, if we can make the decision read that council endorses in plural, please, and remove of. So it reads that council endorses, yeah, the annual report of the audit panel and the audit, yeah, that reads fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with your acceptance.
Excellent. Thank you. Looks like we have nobody else. We have a question from councillor Mason, or you just want to close? Oh, no, you have a second. Do you want to speak?
I do want to say a couple of things. The audit report from the chairman.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I close the debate.
I don't think that councillor Mason ever really got to speak as the second. I think that you said nothing to add and then I don't think I had an opportunity to call the second to give him an opportunity to address. So I'd like to rectify that. So councillor Mason.
Yeah, the audit report really is, it's a forensic examination of our total operations, really. The chairman, Stephen Haneck, of these names, he looks at all the internal risk, all the external risk, all the things that can impact on your operation. And it really is a performance appraisal, our management team mainly, Shane and Cheryl, and they've done a mighty job. And those words come from the chairman.
Yeah, I think that speaks volumes. Any further questions before I return it to councillor Barwick to close? I'm seeing none. Councillor Barwick to close.
Oh, sorry, I had already closed. And then when I closed, the general manager wanted Louise to add up add some more stuff on there. So no, nothing to go on with.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. And we, councillor Barwick, assuming that you've moved it, so there we go. We are unanimous. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chairman, I will apologize. Councillor Mason did not get to speak as a second, so I apologize for that.
No problem. We all make mistakes. No problem at all. Thank you. Item 11.1 is the revised code for tenders and contracts. And I will just proceed straight through to the officer's recommendation, which is.
11.2, Greg. Sorry, man.
Thank you. There we go. Found it. Thank you. It's actually at the top of page 35. The officer's recommendation is that council endorses the changes as outlined and adopts the revised code of tenders. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Harris, thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Thank you. Councillor Micaletta. Councillor Harris.
The revisement of this policy is, was recognized as being required and has already been utilized, I'm pretty sure, in its new version. So it's just another tidy up of another policy that has been re-examined. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Micaletto.
I think it's all been said.
I will just make one comment to it before inviting other people to talk. So members of the public are looking at this recording. So one of the key situations that our council team often faces is that we will release a tender to the commercial sector or to whoever may deemed appropriate. And depending on the nature of that contract, we may not be successful in finding three different tenderers to respond to that contract. And we already have a situation in place where, under certain conditions, to where the tender value exceeds $150,000, the general manager can make a determination and can decide to enact decisions with less than three tenderers responding. This allows him to make a similar determination for values under $150,000. It's consistent. And I think the checks and balances in place are reasonable and appropriate. And with that, I support the motion in its fullest. Any other speakers? Yes, councillor Brooks.
Yes, Mayor, I have a question through to the GM. Is it worth noting whether or not the tender quotes, if they come in under the different levels of delegation and different triggers, inclusive or exclusive GST?
Yes, I'll have to hand that one through the chair to manager of corporate finance. It does deal, the policy does deal with GST. I'll get Mrs. Hyde to confirm which way it does or doesn't, but I do believe it's inclusive of, which reduces the overall figure applicable to council, but I'll ask Miss Hyde to confirm that.
And you, Cheryl?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. Just give it some volume.
I'll speak up. Thank you, Chair. Yes, the policy I understand is exclusive of GST and our delegations, our financial delegations are exclusive of GST and our procurement delegations are exclusive of GST.
So there is, so there is an opportunity or an actual situation that could arise, that the expenditure does breach a cap of the next level when you add GST onto it. Should that be considered or noted or highlighted or identified in the policy anywhere?
So if we have, our tenders are called for both inclusive and exclusive of GST. However, the, I understand, and I'll have to double check the policy, but my understanding is that the the cutoff points are exclusive of GST.
Okay. As always, consistency and it's the lowest risk scenario.
Certainly, our procurement and financial delegations are listed as exclusive of GST as well. And that was something that we've discussed with audit in the past.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Justine. Any other questions from any of the councillors?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I've got the policy in front of me now. Thank you for affording me the time, Cheryl. I can confirm that the amounts, it says here, the council has determined that the prescribed amount for the requirement of open tender is $150,000 exclusive of GST.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillor? Speaking for or against before I hand it back to councillor Harris to close? Councillor Dawson?
Yes, and just confirmation that we as a council or council laws will have a report each time this delegation or have quarterly. Is that written into that policy? I didn't notice.
Through the chair, through you, Mr. Mayor. No, it's not written into the policy, councillor Dawson. So essentially what we're trying to achieve here is we've got prescribed process for, you know, considering tenders above tender threshold that haven't met the criteria in terms of the amount of tenders received. There is no such process below that threshold. So what is policy or that particular change in the policy is trying to do is to add clarity around what that process looks like. And it does give the general manager authority to exercise that right under threshold. Anything above comes to council. So it's consistent with the delegations you've given the general manager and the general manager then on to the officers. If you wanted a report coming to council, we could consider that, but that is not included in this policy.
Now, that's fine. We'll explain. Thank you.
Again, I think appropriate. All right, there being no further questions, I'll hand it back to councillor Harris, the Mr. Deputy, to close.
Thank you, Mayor. I think all's been said and I'll pass it for voting.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. Councillor Barwick, a second. There we go. We're unanimous. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just as you're moving on to the next item, I should clarify that whilst there isn't reports on that particular item coming before council, there is a record and register kept by the general manager for whenever that is exercised.
Correct. Thank you, Shane. Item 11.3 speaks to the risk management framework. And again, this is a revision to an existing policy which has been enacted. The office's recommendation is printed at the bottom of page 37, which is to endorse the revised risk management strategy, the risk management policy and the risk management procedures. Do I have a mover for item 11.3, please? Councillor Mason, thank you. Do I have a second for that item, please? Councillor Dawson. Councillor Mason.
Thank you, sir, Mayor. It's a revision of a past strategy. But the risk management strategy was workshop with the council on the 9th of June. And also was considered by the audit panel at the council meeting on the 29th of June. All the consultation and it was all about the review of the risk register in line with strategic risks and review of the risk register in line with the operational risks. And quite happy to move the officer's recommendation that we endorse the revised risk management strategy, risk management policy and risk management procedures.
Thank you very much, councillor Mason. Councillor Dawson?
Like councillor Mason's comments there, this council's probably been exposed for quite some time by not recognizing some of the risks that our workforce and our systems have been exposed to. And it's good to see that we're at the cutting edge now. We're actually at a point where we can get out there and work comfortably in the knowledge that our risk has been captured. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, any speakers? For against? Good. I think we're going to hand that one straight back to councillor Mason to close.
Nothing further to add, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Put that to a vote. All those in favour of item 11.3, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. Thank you very much. Right. Item 12 is the section on livable and connected communities. And this month, we are considering some of the sponsorship applications and events that we traditionally have held. This is something that attaches quite a high degree of scrutiny. Obviously, you want to make sure that as a community, you're getting good bang for your buck. And it's not just all about the money, so to speak. It's also about what it delivers for the community. But in this particular one, which deals with the application for sponsorship for the tour of Tasmania, I'll point to the officer's recommendation, which is midway through page 42, which is that council declines the sponsorship application of the tour of Tasmania, GTR Tour Event, to host stage one of the 2020 Tour of Tasmania in Georgetown. Do I have a mover? I think I saw councillor Barwick's hand.
You did?
So councillor Barwick, head was down writing, I think I saw hands at the top there. Councillor Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Look, this application for the tour of Tasmanian Cycling Tour, the Spirit, as it's called, the Spirit Tasmanian Cycling Tour. We've put quite a lot of money into this. We've, it's not been as popular or given, in my opinion, and different people that have looked at and been and seen this, the what's the word? I'm going to try and find, find the word. And what hasn't given us a promotion that we would have liked for the amount of money that we have put into this. It's only in flash, they're here, they're gone sort of thing. Then there's more sponsorship goes on further around. We, as the beginning of it, are not really that much up in the forefront when it starts up. The thing that I love about this documentation of the way that we are doing these sponsorships now is our assessment criteria. When you read this assessment criteria, it tells you a lot. It's the first time that I think that Megan should be congratulating or putting this done with Megan and Rhonda or just Megan or whoever the officer staff person is. This sponsorship weighting in that that we get here really tells us a lot more than people putting in there saying, oh, it's people like it, it does this, it does that. It actually tells us, is it, does it appeal to the minority of interest in here? It talks about does it, what is the economy to the impact to the traders? This is the first time we've really had an honest, as far as I can gather, an assessment of this and I have no hassles and in, and don't feel guilty about declining the sponsorship for this. We can possibly use this $5,000 on something that we will get more benefit out of in something in the future. Thank you.
Yeah. And before I invite councillor Parks to speak as a second, if I just may, just suggest a slightly alternative choice of language. So I'd say this is the first time we possibly have an objective assessment process. I believe that all the ones in the past have been honest. But I'd say that this is a very objective and data-driven way of assessing the applications. And I grant, I share your opinion. Commend Megan and I commend Rhonda on the process. I think it's very, very informative and very data-driven.
What did I say wrong, Mr. Chairman? I was referring to the fact that this is a great way that we are getting the real facts now in writing.
Thank you. I think you said it's the first time that we have had honest appraisals and.
Well, that's it. This is the first time we've had this honest appraisal.
No, that's, that's just.
I've never seen that write up in this ever before.
Now, I'd say you, they're all.
On the Spirit of Tasmania Cycling Tour, no.
I'd say that all of the feedback from our council offices has been honest, but this is a far more data-driven, objective process. So I don't agree with your, the choice of language you've used. Councillor Parks?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the group actually probably needs congratulating, trying to bring something unique to the town. For whatever reasons, it just never really got the traction that we'd hoped it would have in Georgetown. And I'm sure there's other places around Tasmania that cycling has a huge following, as we know. And I'm sure there's other places in Tasmania that will likely take up the event rather than us. Yeah, it just, it just hasn't done what we'd hoped it would do. And unfortunately, the circumstances that we're in too with the COVID pandemic. I suspect that would be, you know, even though this event's in December, I can't really for the next 12 months seeing things changing too much until we have a vaccine. So I agree with the officer's assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody for or against any speakers? Councillor Dawson?
Yes, I suppose I'd involve the council officers or through the GM that we might sort of give some positives or some feedback to the spirit tour group, just to let them know why we have dropped this off. I don't agree with. I don't agree with councillors, well councillor Barwick's assessment that all of our previous applications have been dishonest and how we've dealt with them. I think that's incorrect. I think things that, when we've seen the tour coming to Georgetown in the past, we expected and we were pretty much given the idea that it was going to be the Georgetown start and we'd get a fair bit of advertising from it and we never. Quite often when it was, when it went to media, it come across as the world stage and all this type of thing. It wasn't heavily supported by the locals. It did have a small impact on some of the local businesses, which we'd recognised in some of the data, but not overly high as result of us. I hope we find another event that replaces it and that our community really gets behind it. And I think there's opportunity with that coming with the mountain bike trails and those types of things. So I wish the spirit of the tour the best of success and get it to do.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Brooks, yes?
I'll speak against the recommendation. I'm slightly confused by the report because I've just got to flick to the page because I can't scroll down. The, the group offered up some additional programme enhancements, if for want of a better word, which I thought sounded pretty good. And there just seems to be a missed opportunity where we can go back. I mean, you know, it's, it's a shame to lose any event that brings any attention to here. We don't have to accept a five thousand dollar application. We can go back to them and say, well, actually, we've done the economic assessment and we think that, you know, it's probably worth two grand or something like that. We'll offer you two thousand if you're happy to accept that. None of this current climate that probably would. I just think there's a missed opportunity in there to negotiate and to actually see whether the two new enhancements that they've recommended have an impact. And if we put them into place this year and there was no improvement in responsiveness or participation, then perhaps next year we could definitively say, no, it's actually not working for us. I think we're jumping too soon. I think there's a step in the middle that we could potentially take to assess what they've, you know, to reduce the cost to us and also analyse the new enhancements that they've put forward.
Thank you, councillor Brooks. Any other speakers? There being no further speakers, I'm going to hand that one back to councillor Barwick to close.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just would also like to question the comment made by councillor Dawson that I used the word dishonest. I didn't use the word dishonest, I don't believe, so I will have to listen to this tape. I said we had an honest assessment here. So sorry, Mr Harris.
I'm sorry.
I, I just feel that we have attempted, as a council, as a group out in our office, doing this, have attempted to even ask this biking tour if they would look at doing a tour around the Regent Square for us. There's been lots of things that they have attempted to do that haven't happened. And I just feel that this is probably the best way we can assess do assessments on anything that we are going to do from here on in. They will be properly assessed and then the decision again is up to the council at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. So with that, I'll put that to a vote and again, just to remind everybody we're voting that the council declines the sponsorship application of our GTR events to host stage one of the twenty twenty tour of Tasmania and Georgetown. All those in favour, please raise your hand. We have councillor Keizer. Sorry, just raise your hands again so I can read out the record. Councillor Keizer, councillor Parks, councillor Mickaleta, councillor Mason, councillor Barrowclough, councillor Dawson, councillor Barwick. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. We have councillor Harris, councillor Brooks, councillor Mickaleta. Just Louise, can you please just tick the record? I think I might have called councillor Mickaleta as being for the motion. Maybe you didn't tick it. Motion is carried. The motion is carried. Thank you. We'll just make sure we get all the names down there. Thank you, Justin.
I think Justin, councillor Brooks is asking a question.
I was trying to ask the question before we entered the vote. Does this now preclude us to going back to negotiating with them on a lower sponsorship fee or that's it? It's dead in the water?
Through the chair. No, it wouldn't preclude them from doing so. We can advise them that the application wasn't successful on this occasion for various reasons. And they are still welcome to put in other applications for sponsorship, having considered why we rejected it on this occasion.
Thank you, Jan.
I think it's a great response and I like the fact that we're open to other approaches. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, if I may, as you're heading to the next report for consideration, I just want to bring it to the attention of council that the office's recommendation has a slight typo that I'd like corrected before your considerations. So to the chair, to the executive governance officer, if we could make the office's recommendation on page forty six, remove the word cycling from Long Sessam Cycling Club and replace it with triathlon. So it reads Long Sessam Triathlon Club.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, that, that would be interesting. Sorry, that's just my weird sense of humour. Councillor Barwick?
I will move that recommendation and the catch was mine, by the way. I picked that up.
Good catch. Councillor, so we have the mover being councillor Barwick. And do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Mason, thank you. And so just for the record, everybody, in this case, we're voting to approve the sponsorship from the Long Sessam Triathlon Club for this event. Thank you. Councillor Barwick?
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Look, we did have a good chat about this one and the assessment on this, which is on page forty five, is a very positive assessment of this application, this triathlon coming into Georgetown. The amount of people that do attend over there, I have known in the last twice that they've been there, that people have said, what a great day. So it's to me, it's something, especially being the World Cup's World Qualifying Triathlon, I think will bring a lot more people into the community and probably put a lot of interest in our community as well to go over and support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mason.
Yes, triathlons are a sport that really showcases your town, really. Lots of people, it's a fairly slow process. So people have got time to look around, they've got time to spend money. And those that really follow it get to see a lot of our town. Glad to support it.
Thank you. Councillor Parks? So I've got a queue. We'll just read that. Councillor Parks, I go councillor Brooks, then I'll go councillor Dawson. Go for it.
Thanks, Matt. Just, just wondering, was this the full triathlon? One question through you to perhaps the Megan. The other question I have is re-risk mitigation. Even though this event's, I believe, in March, what are our thoughts or our procedures, risk mitigation strategy? Should the pandemic still be persisting? I wouldn't have thought we want to have large crowds. Or I don't know, has that been thought about during this submission? Thank you. Got a couple of questions then.
Fair question. Through the chair to Megan Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Parks, we have taken this into consideration in relation to the pandemic. If the event was not to go forward, the funds would be returned to council. If there is any restrictions in relation to groups and numbers, we would make sure that they adhere to what those regulations are in social distancing, hand washing, et cetera. And I think your other, first question was, could you reiterate the first question? There were those two.
I think the two, what happens if the one is, is this a full triathlon?
No, it's not a full triathlon. The ride leg is not being undertaken in the World Series events, but it is taking place in the novice events.
Okay. Right, thank you. I think we had councillor Dawson. Following councillor Dawson, we'll go to councillor Brooks. Over to you, councillor Dawson.
I thought councillor Brooks was first.
Sorry if I got that screwed up. I might have. It's councillor Brooks, then councillor Dawson.
Thank you. My question, I'll still ask it. It was, is similar to councillor Parks, but slightly different. I'm wondering if it might be better to remove March to twenty twenty one in case of cold weather. We've had it before where it's had to be moved to another date. If we're agreeing to a resolution that specifically only allows the money to be paid if it's held on March, well, just as March twenty twenty one, have we thought about perhaps loosening it up a bit if the date is pushed down further down the track, I guess is my question. It's convoluted, but that's it.
So why don't we, because really, okay, so let's, let's deal with the technicality first. I'm going to ask both Shane and Megan about whether or not we could extend in the event that postpones but still falls within the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one cycle. And then we'll take it from there. Either of you.
Well, I'm happy for it to sit in this financial calendar year. So, and I'm happy for that to be extended to either be March, April, May, June. Yeah, I'm happy for that to sit.
And then Shane, in terms of the technicalities, if we have a motion that is prescriptive around it being in March, what's the process? Would we have to change the wording of the motion?
Potentially, yes. So I think what councillor Brooks has raised, it does free up council if the month is removed. So you might want to consider, you know, removing March and including twenty twenty slash twenty twenty one.
So with the movers permission, so councillor Barwick, with your permission, would you be amenable to removing the word March in?
Yes.
So please note the record that it was agreed to by the mover and that it now just reflects twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Thank you. A great suggestion. Good catch. Any further questions? Councillor Dawson?
Okay, so along a similar line as the previous two speakers, we have an application for Long Sessam Triclub for an aquathon, which is a two-part, being not a triathlon. And our motion says qualifying triathlon, which is what's not being asked. Do we need to change that to aquathon? And the other question through to Megan would be in previous years, and I'm generally supportive of the Long Sessam Triclub and what they bring down, in the last couple of years that they've come down, we've paid a similar amount, I thought around fifteen hundred dollars. And we've got three triathlons, three days. Am I correct in thinking that? And was it a similar amount of money? And it's how they justify fifteen hundred for one event. And that's what it sounds like to me. Or is this one event over three days? I'm, I'm just need some clarification.
I'm of the belief that it is the same as last year, so it's over the three-day period. And it is a world qualifying event. So the novice events and the other events that have been undertaken in previous years will continue. But then there is an actual portion of it that is the aquathon, which is that world qualifying event.
Ah, okay, I see. All right.
Is that, is that stated in their application? But I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get the, the thought in my head that it was a three, a tri-stage kind of a thing or any of that sort of stuff or a three-day thing. I just got that it was this one event.
With this report, it's been put up by Rhonda and I'm of the belief that it's, she's had obviously discussions with them, not just from their application, but if you would allow me, I'll I'll actually clarify that for you.
That'd be cool because, I mean, what I think what they've done in previous years is have given us three dates. And if one of them dates didn't work out in the course of weather or I think we had a sewage bill in one year and they couldn't do the swim week. So that changed from the bay to the pool and all that sort of stuff. So
And we have, we did have a similar event this year because it was November originally. Now it's gone to March.
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm fully supportive. I just need a little bit more info.
Through you, Mr Chair, the, the application says that it's to be held on Sunday, March twenty second. And that the event serves as a club championship race as well as a world leg. It is over three different categories. Tri stars, novice and sprint. And soloing team participations. Not sure if that helps.
It does. What, what it tells me is that it's a one-day event, not a three-day event.
Certainly how I'm reading it as well.
Yeah. Okay. And it'd be not, I mean, and not to say that there might be subsequent applications from the Long Sessam Triclub that comes in and says we're going to do another two or three-day event like we've done in the past and whether we consider that. But I'd just like, I think before we consider it, we might be better off get some clarification around that. And like, while that, what we have done with Targa, what we have done with the Spirit event, we could actually say, well, getting our money as a, as a one-day event. And it being, you know, a qualifying event, it might certainly need that extra bit of funding for that one-off event. And I mean, at least we can understand it on its merits.
So if, so councillor Harris is in the queue, so he's going, I'm going to hand over to him to speak after this. Maybe we should proceed as it is literally written, that it is an event, because that seems to me to be reasonably clear in the application document, that it is an event held on one day. So let's make a determination based on that. And then if there's further clarification that comes through, you know, we have a policy that if new information comes to light, we can potentially investigate whether or not we then reconsider that decision in a future meeting. But let's, let's move that one to a conclusion based on what's before us. Councillor Harris?
I think you'll find that there are, the aquathon is one event, which is the world qualifying event. And then there are three other events on the same day for juniors, novices and those not of the standard to compete in the aquathon. So the aquathon is one event, which is only two stages, which is the, the swim and the, and the run leg. And then the others I got have three legs.
Thank you. Councillor Parks and then
I just wonder if we should lay it on the table until we get some more information. You know, I feel now that I'm, I can't make a proper decision based on this information personally.
I'm of a similar view and just to reflect on what councillor Harris had just mentioned, all the other events were, did have three different events on the one day as well. So in effect, over three days, we had nine events and this one, they're asking for three events plus the qualifier on the one day. So, yeah.
I mean, Education from councillor Barrowclough, that councillor Barrowclough is of a similar opinion. And I think that that's a valid point of view, you know. I think we have to be consistent in our application. If you don't have all the information to really make an informed decision, then I'm happy for us to just pass this one in.
I'll move that motion if you like procedure that sits on the table until we get more information.
Oh, seconded. But it's not time sensitive by the looks of it.
Yeah, I think we can consider this one at a subsequent meeting. So Louise, if you've got that one, so we have a procedural motion from councillor Parks, seconded by councillor Dawson, that the item be laid on the table, that it lie on the table. And with that, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favour of accepting the procedural motion, please raise your hand. Anybody else abstaining, anyone else to accept the procedural motion? So councillor Keizer, councillor Dawson, councillor Parks, councillor Mickaleta, councillor Mason, councillor Barrowclough, all those against the procedural motion, councillor Brooks, councillor Barwick. Motion is carried. We will defer that one. And we'll bring it back once we have all the necessary. Councillor Harris, can I catch your vote? Four events. Anyway, will the, will, will, will Anyway, will the, will, will, will defer it? I think we made that call. All right, thank you, team.
I was a four vote.
You were the, the fourth one in the against category.
No, I was a four vote.
You were four. Thank you very much. Thank you. Get it right. Okay. I'll just give Louise just a little bit of time to catch up before we move on to matters of involvement. There we go. Thank you. Item 13.1 relates to matters of involvement and as is our customers, matters of involvement and where necessary, matters involved with the mayor and the deputy mayor were appropriate. The item is documented. Do I have a mover for that mover councillor Dawson? I have a second in councillor Parks. Councillor Dawson.
No, I think everything's there. It looks like you've had a fair bit on your plate recently and quite a few official meetings and engagements with ministers and such. So that looks like you're actually getting out there and doing all the good things that the mayor should be doing.
Thank you very much councillor Parks.
Yes, I concede what councillor Dawson said there. Just wondering if there is anything, you're probably going to say no. But June the 22nd met with the development, potential development and the one on July the 20th, that developments as well, is there anything within developments that you can talk about, Mr Mayor?
I wish I could, councillor Parks, unfortunately so many of these things are confidential in nature. Except to say that I am incredibly excited by what I'm seeing. I'm incredibly excited by the prospects and the pipeline of interested parties. And I just, I, I tell you, this place, you're not going to recognise it in five years. It's, it's really looking fantastic and I'll leave it at that. Apologies for not being able to share more detail. Any other questions councillor Barrowclough?
In relation to what Peter said, I mean, are we able to ask whether is that more industrial or development of Georgetown or the residential area?
In this case, it's all, all, all to do with the Bell Bay Advanced Manufacturing Zone. But as you know yourself, we are also going through a real purple patch in terms of residential starts. So both sectors are doing incredibly well, in line with Tasmania's overall performance. It's a top performing economy in the state and the first time we've, we've been able to achieve that position in many, many years.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Barwick.
Mr Chairman, on the 2nd of July, attended retirement function for council employee after 35 years of service. Then you tell me who that is.
I indeed can, if you'll just let me quickly refer to my calendar. Phil. You.
You.
Young.
Phil Young, sorry. What, what a shame that we as councillors or those that have been around that the whole time Phil's been here weren't advised or a card didn't come from this council table to say goodbye to Phil.
I'll hand that one over to.
I rather was quite sad, I knew who it was as soon as I seen it. And I thought, well, sometimes recognition from, for someone that's done service even before the new councillors came on here, they would have known Phil anyway. And to me, it's, it's a sad thing he's gone, but sad that we didn't as a group send him a card to say wish him well on his journeys of his new life after council.
General manager, can you respond?
If I can, Mr Mayor, a couple of things. One, I have sent a card to Phil on behalf of both the organisation and council. Having said that, it's not too late for either individual elected members or council through the mayor to send a card either. With regard to his actual send off, Phil was reluctant to have one at all. And is quite reserved and shy and therefore there was no invitations forthcoming. In fact, we're lucky to get, get him in a, in a forum where there was more than a handful of people for him to feel comfortable. He, he had expressed that, he had sent that in, he had sent his farewells in an email to relevant staff members expressing that author.
Before I hand over to councillor Harris, who's next in the queue, and Phil did express his sincere gratitude to the council, the elected members, that was very, in his request, didn't want a big song and dance, didn't want any speeches, didn't want anything else, just goodbye, thank you. And he was out of the door. Councillor Harris.
I did find out about it. I think I saw something in an email, so it may well have been out and about. But considering he didn't want his, his speeches, the mayor just went on and on. He, he was quite, he looked a bit emotional, but I think he's going to go enjoy his retirement.
Yeah.
Quite possibly in his garden.
Yeah.
There's room for improvement on your speeches then councillor Keizer.
Yeah, brevity. Anyone else? All right, well, I'll hand that then back to councillor Dawson if you want to close.
No, I'm sure councillor Brooks had her offer. I wasn't sure if she.
Thank you, councillor Brooks, sorry for a mystery.
No, I was just, you're just going to say he probably didn't want us to be discussing it on a recorded message either.
Yeah.
Given his shyness and reservedness.
Probably looking at these recorded video meeting with, in horror, where fellow, anyway, it was a good event. All right, we'll put that one to a vote then. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Barwick, a session, there we go, unanimous, thank you. Item 14 is petitions, we have none.
If I can, Mr Mayor, we did receive some petitions, however, the, the person lodging has been notified that are non-compliant and therefore they have not been tabled, but I'd bring it to the intention of the council that there had been some submitted but not accepted. They may be forthcoming in future meeting.
I think I'll be, I think I can be transparent in saying that there was, it relates to the question with notice from Bellboy Beach regarding the speed limits and the residents collectively would really like to see some action. So I'll leave it at that. Councillor Barwick, did you have your hand?
No, you've just answered the question, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brooks, did you also have a question?
Oh, no, I'm jumping the gun for the next item. I'd like to move a motion from the floor under the number 15.
Thank you. In that case, notice of motion, please lead away.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move a motion that the mayor, as the council spokesperson, provide opportunity for other councillors to speak to media outlets when council is contacted or councillor laws is contacted by or are contacted by journalists about specific notice of motions they may have put up or subject matters that align more closely with their professional expertise. I can email that to, to Louise or Brent, if that would be.
Through the chair, that, that may be helpful, councillor Brooks, if you were to email that to.
I'll just do that right now.
Thank you.
Do you like to be copied in, GM?
Yes, please.
Hold a second now.
That's gone now.
And you're going to have this seconded by councillor Barrowclough, Louise. All right, I think we're ready to do that one. Is there anything further you want to say in introducing the motion before we open it to questions, et cetera?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I was recently contacted by multiple news outlets about my recent, the recent motion regarding councils development of a domestic family and sexual violence strategy. But I gave them all a consistent response that I was unable to discuss it because I was not the spokesperson for council, which is the right thing to do. And I also wanted to ensure that I didn't create a conflict of interest by participating as CEO of Laurel House because they'd rang me as the councillor. Unfortunately, yesterday, it was brought to my attention that we missed quite a few opportunities when the mayor provided the interview on ABC Drive programme. And I'm just trying to really carefully slip my words because I'm not wanting to criticise. What, there were several factual inaccuracies. And key elements of the proposal weren't promoted and it was a missed opportunity. So for example, when the mayor was asked about how council would go about developing the strategy, the mayor responded that, you know, that was a million dollar question, which is, which is fine, but it indicated we weren't sure. But in fact, I had discussed that our watch had proactively contacted us to congratulate us and offer their full support to develop the strategy and also that local government toolkit had been developed and they were happy for us to be the first off the rank. So that would have been great if that had been, if that had come across on the ABC Drive programme. There was discussion that we had looked at statistics and that violence was not really an issue, not, you know, than anyone else for Georgetown. Unfortunately, we hadn't looked at any statistics. This was brought to my attention. And that in fact, unfortunately, it is an issue for Georgetown. Now, in my speech, I had actually said, I didn't want to talk about that specifically because I didn't want to stigmatise Georgetown and it was an issue for all communities, but in fact it is an issue. So that was brought to my attention as well. There were other things like the mayor indicated that I'd moved it from the floor in the interview, but in fact I'd put in a formalised notice of motion. And there were a few other inaccuracies, but as I said, I'm not directing this at the mayor. I'm being very careful in my wording. And even in my title, or what I actually do for work was this quoted. So the reason for this motion is whilst I acknowledge that the mayor is the spokesperson for council, I think if a councillor puts forward a notice of motion that they are passionate about or own, or it's in their area of expertise, that it would be reasonable that the mayor give that person permission to actually conduct an interview if contacted by the media. And I feel that if we had that in place before it happened, then there's less scrambling if there is contact, can I, can't I? And I just think, I think there might be other areas of expertise that we get questioned about and it would be good if the mayor gave opportunity to other councillors to respond to interview requests. Be interested to know what other people's thoughts were.
In terms of procedure, I'm happy to have, so firstly, I know what the statutory position is and it's everything you've asked. So it's, it's already in the policy. So I absolutely can, if I'm requested, I could. How about we have the second and then I'll outline what I know of the policy? Because again, you're arguing for something you already have. You just have to ask as a acknowledged expert in that area. It's not a problem. So how do you want to proceed? You want to, John, should, should we ask? I mean, I'm happy to tell you what I know, how about we have Shane tell you what he knows? And then you can decide whether or not you still want to have the motion on the books. How about we do, go for Shane.
Just so you, yeah, you, you need to have your second to speak to the motion and then you can open.
Yeah, okay, let's do that. Chris, sorry, go for Chris.
No, I think Justin pretty much covered all the, the majority of the points. Yes, the mayor is the spokesperson. When a councillor is so incredibly passionate towards a particular subject and there is a lot of details, it's important in, in order to get that point across, it's, it's really important to get all the facts correct in order to portray the, the cause of doing that correctly to, to the public. So I think, yes, we do need to include that councillor, the person who put that motion forward, who is, you know, sufficiently passionate towards a subject to be involved in the process of promoting it or not promoting, depending on the, on the, on the motion that's been put forward. So absolutely, I, I fully agree that this, the councillor should indeed be included in that process. So if, if the mayor is saying it's, it's already in the policy, then why don't we, why don't we use, why don't we utilise that?
If I may, Mr Mayor.
Right now we can, we've had the second to speak now, if you can clarify.
So the, the tool available exists under the Local Government Act where it talks about the mayor as a spokesperson of council. The mayor can, by notice in writing, delegate for a specified period, either both of the functions referred to, either to a deputy mayor or a councillor or to the general manager for a specific period. Where that could be strengthened or better utilised is probably backed up by a policy that we haven't got in place. We've got, but other policies such as social media policy and the like. But maybe a councillor communications policy could be drafted to better, you know, guide council and the mayor on what is and what isn't appropriate times for others, other than the spokesman as delegated under legislation being the mayor. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And just for clarification, Justin, if I'd been asked, I would almost certainly have accepted and said, no problem. You are the acknowledged expert, that's incontestable. So what do you want to do? I mean, you've already got exactly what you're asking for, it's already in place. I mean, if you want to undertake a review of the policy so we can flesh out the detail that Shane has talked about, certainly have to workshop that. But I think that's kind of a moot point, again, with your.
I think it's too, when they call, you have to say, you know, you don't, you're not expecting the call, obviously, sometimes. You know, I, my standard response is always you need to call the mayor about that, he's the spokesperson for council. If there's something already actively in place that allows me or gives me an idea or any, any of the councils, not just about me, but this is just an example that's triggered it. That it's following on under certain circumstances, that we can talk to them, that would be good. Rather than have to say, oh, hang on, I'll have to ring the mayor, I have to get something in writing, then I can talk back to you, which is a little bit cumbersome if we can't get you in time and all that kind of stuff.
Like wholeheartedly delegated, so.
We just need that laid out so that councillors can follow that and that they're not in breach accidentally. So something a little bit more robust.
If I may then, and again, please with your permission, and I'm not trying to shape the procedure here, but I would like to, let's take it to workshop so that we can set out some of those protocols. I want you to know that my strong preference is where possible to showcase the diversity of the team. It is a skills based team, but certainly that is the goal, I think of any effective, effective council. And, you know, it's only logical where there is a motion that has been passed and it is clearly the position of the council, that that person be empowered to speak to that motion where they have the authority. I think that those are reasonable preconditions though for applying that delegation. So, and I would support that, no problem at all.
That sounds good, thank you, Mayor.
With your permission, if we can maybe withdraw that notice on, motion on notice. And Shane, if I can ask you to please and add that to the workshop schedule so that we can debate that one and we can work out how to give that a bit of form, I'd be comfortable in having that everyone's view. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Kind of gets lonely out there sometimes, always being the one goose they call when you don't really know your stuff. Okay, item 16, councillors' questions with or without notice. Councillor Dawson, you have a hand there, sorry, I didn't see.
Yes, I've got a question. It's around a recent social media post that was on a thumbs down page from Georgetown. It was brought up by a local businessperson around some of the, another presentation of some of our mainstream and sort of back properties. And I won't mention the businesses because I don't think that'd be fair. But. But the question would be, what, what can we do as a council to demonstrate to our community and our business community that we're proactively doing something in this space to actually tidy up some of these businesses and our Main Street frontings, that type of thing? What can we do? How are we doing?
Over to you, Shane.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just knowing that there, there are some questions on notice. I'm not sure if you want to deal with those first. Sorry, I don't want to.
These are.
16.1.
That, that's from one I'm happy for. And I know I've probably caught some off guard and gives you opportunity to consider what I've said as well.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to go there, right?
A big pardon, sorry, I lost that. You're entirely right. Well, let's conclude this question. You know, it's not like we need to be in that form. Well, let's, let's wrap this one up and then we'll move on to 16.1 and two and three, which I hear this questions. Are you okay if we do that? It's not, it's just that I screwed it up, sorry. I'll just assume that you have this okay with it. Shane, just carry on.
I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
I have said, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have seen some of those posts as well, councillor Dawson. So there are a number of things. Firstly, I can confirm that council officers are currently working with a couple of proponents about prospective development. We clean up the two private properties that were referred to in this instance. Secondly, we've had, you know, very, very broad conversations through the chair of the placemaking committee around how we might be able to construct, you know, like the garden beds that are moved, mobile garden beds kind of thing to help, you know, take away from some of the facades of buildings that aren't being necessarily looked after and some of the neglected properties. In addition to that, councillors will recall that our manager of development environment will be coming to a council workshop at some point in the future with a briefing paper around some unsightly properties and what the avenues available to council are with regard to enforcement and intervention. And so that was scheduled to come prior to now, however, through the COVID saga, if you like, we've decided to delay that. We didn't want to upset any particular individuals, whether they be private or commercial entities at this point in time, but there will be a briefing paper coming to, to council around what it can do in this space around enforcing cleanup of property under the Public Health Act or other legislation tools, such as even considering a local law. We can work with individual property owners and we have done so through the current grant process that we have available at the moment, actually, the community, particularly, you know, specifically, I should say, in response to the COVID grant applications. So I won't name them publicly here, but we are working with a couple of private entity owners at the moment around how they can improve their facade of their buildings. So there's, I suppose, some tools such as grants that we can encourage people to do the right thing with regard to amenity and maintenance. And then there's enforcement tools that we can do around public health, building structures, fire preventative measures, et cetera. The good news, I don't know, is that I hope that we can see some development applications on shortly that will effectively clean up some of those properties that have been identified specifically on that media channel, social media. I hope that helps. Obviously, anything in the public realm is council responsibility. And if we, you know, if it's brought to our attention, it is unsightly pavements or you know, due to vegetation or other unsafe reasons, that we will act on those accordingly.
No, thank you, thank you. And so I'm going to allow a question from councillor Harris and then we're going to move on to Heather's questions. I'm assuming it's not a new question, councillor Harris.
Yeah, it's in regard to what has just been put there.
Thank you.
What powers do we have to impose on landowners for removal of graffiti? Because there's some commentary around the place in some parts of the town that's out there in bold paint and shouldn't be. And also down at the supermarket on the fence, it's kept on getting graffitied. Now, the fence would be half owned by Woolworths, I'd say, and half owned by whoever owns a block of ground there next to it. So can't we do some enforcing to get some of this removed or blacked out, whatever? It's on the car park next to the hairdressers next to what used to be chicken feed. And there's some, you know, other spots around the place that need to be addressed.
So unless, unless to you, Mr. Chair, unless any of my management team have a specific organization in front of them at the moment, what I'd say is we'll take that question on a notice. Again, a local law normally deals with some of these kind of things, but it also can often be triggered whether or not it's offensive in some manner or another. So I'll take that question on notice and come back with a, with a response about what enforcement measures are available to council at the moment and what could be, should a local law be brought in place.
And should there be a timeframe applied to the redemption of that, or the that the correction of that information? Thanks.
Thank you. All right, with that, let's move on to item 16.1, which is a question from councillor Barwick regarding some vegetation remediation happening out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before I proceed though, Shane, I know we discussed this one previously because with, with Rex, I know that there's some additional information we need to highlight.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, and for you and to councillor Barwick and to the rest of the council. So at the time of publishing the agenda, the information, it's in response to councillor Barwick's question, this is at 16.1, was of interest, information available to the officer at the time. And the officer is, the manager of development environment has since done some further investigation and work in this particular space and is also waiting on some further information to be coming back to him from relevant authorities. He can speak more to that if you wish at this point in time, but I also note that a question of similar nature is raised at 16.4 requesting a report to the August meeting of council, which I would support.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, look, I did have to speak, talk with Rex and I do know there will be a full report coming to the council in August, which addresses more modern, updated than the one that's there. But the reason that I brought this forward again is it's been probably in the last 12 months, there's been lots of questions asked and people quite annoyed down there in Hillwood, in that area. And I was advised that a soil and water management plan was submitted on March the 8th, 2017 to James Stewart, especially for 105 Hillwood Road. And there was also, there's a lot of concerns there between the land, between the highway and the main road was done under the forestry practices plan, which basically says in that plan that the owners can do virtually anything. But the buffer zone that has been left there has been the main concern of the community in there because they see that's their contention, pointed contention with the residents down there, because it is a very fine buffer zone, you know, whereas the buffer zone, they believe was to go there was to be one so that you could not see through it like, you know, the big gaps that's in there. But I thank Rex for bringing back the report next month. So we'll see where it goes from there. So that's really all I've got to say about this until the next one comes back. And thank you for letting me put it on there for the rate pays.
Thank you. And so I will then assume that we all accept 16.1, we're really just noting the question that's been responded to. And we also acknowledge that on the 16.4, there will be a comprehensive report that will be published. Both Shane, councillor Barwick, Rex and myself have discussed the issue. It is ongoing.
16.4?
Yes, 16.4.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Very much so. We'll then move on to 16.2, which is the Main Street CCTV system question that was raised by councillor Park. So what I am going to disclose is we actually have received a response from Tasmanian police. I was unsure whether or not the information contained in there was too confidential in nature or not to disclose it in the fullest in this forum. Suffice to say.
We have a copy of that report for insight.
I'll let Shane make the determination. I assume that we probably can to the council. Suffice to say that those CCTV cameras, without a question of a doubt, are delivering enhanced policing effort on behalf of the community. They are utilized and they're delivering results. And quite considerable ones. So, Peter, is there anything else you want to add?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, no, I appreciate the council's officers' time on that. I perhaps could just say for for clarity to your question six around the, the cost of the project. I understand the original grant was around 14,000, but I believe also it came back to council two or three times for top up. I seem to remember a figure of 25 to 28,000. But the reasons for my questions, and I wonder if council would consider the GM investigating a bit further now that we know that the system is of value and is sustainable. We're about to embark on a substantial upgrade of assets in that area through Regent Square and that car parked area. And also hoping that the area will be used in twilight times. I wonder if it's worth considering for the GM and his team at one or two more cameras in that area to protect our assets and protect public safety in that area. That's my, why I wanted to know that information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think that that's again wholly appropriate and under, it's broader than just the Regent Square project, but certainly it falls within, a component of it will fall within the Regent Square project as well as the police officers actually suggesting some areas of the existing network that could be refined to cover some of the black spots. Again, that would assist their efforts and my overall thought is that it's both reasonable and delivers good value for the community. So if you want to add that one again as a workshop item for discussion, Shane, I think it would be good for having to have the whole team understand utilization and the value.
All right, Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you. We certainly can do that. And perhaps we could even invite representatives from Taspol locally to come and address council to that effect. And certainly we'll be advocating and trying to get some further funds through whatever granting opportunities are available to.
In fact, I'll just note that the area commander did indicate a willingness to actually come and present to council to discuss this issue specifically and he was quite engaging. All right, then item 16.3.
Mr. Mayor, I think there's a question. Our councillor Barwick has a hand raised.
Thank you, Shane. Thanks for catching up. Councillor Bar.
Yeah, I'd just like to advise the council that we are going to get our safety committee back working as of the 4th of, um, next month. So this will be brought, be discussed at our safety group committee next month, the issues that have been raised.
Excellent. Thank you. So item 16.3 relates to the draft minutes, a question, so councillor Barwick asks, are councillors able to advise ratepayers of responses to subjects discussed at the previous public meeting before the draft minutes are approved? And then secondly, council monthly draft minutes are not available to the general public in time to put a question notice for the next meeting of council. Can this be changed, please? I'm certainly comfortable answering part two, but why don't we hand it over to you, Shane? And you can have a stab at it first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to, can you discuss items that have been brought for a public meeting? Yes, you can, even though the minutes have not been ratified or confirmed, you still can. We've had that conversation or that correspondence to and from the local government division with regard to if there's been a nominal season in minutes, for instance, should it impact on council adopting those minutes if it doesn't impact on a decision of council necessarily? So you can, we enact decisions of council before the minutes are ratified and it is common practice across the state and I've done that again, in consultation with my colleagues across the state as well. So I'm confident that you can do that. In closed session, clearly you can't, but in public forum, clearly you can. And as you can see through the barrier in which we utilize at the moment, you know, the public are, you know, well, truly able to access conversations, debate and decisions and all the rest of it via this, via on stream or sorry, via online video, audio, video. With regard to number two, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted me to speak to that one as well.
Oh, I don't have a go at it.
Okay, so the question there is, can this be changed with regard to draft minutes not available to the general public? You know, and I think that's odd debate that it's not in time for them to raise any questions personally, but I think there is sufficient time provided. But in order to change that, it would require a change in the motion or rescinding of an existing motion, council moved at its April meeting, which I don't have in front of me, but there was a motion on the books that says something along the lines of council will receive a copy of the, of the minutes for consideration at least seven days prior to publishing for that brought to public, which is in line with the statutory requirements.
I have that actual motion that we carried written up here on the basis of reads that in accordance with sections 34 and 35, the local government meeting procedures regulations of 2005. Council makes available the unconfirmed minutes of an ordinary council meeting as soon as practical to the public, but not less than seven days after first being circulated to councillors. And councillor Bar, I'm sure you'll recall that the council decided that due to some of the inaccuracies, that those minutes would first be circulated to councils so that any observed inaccuracies or omissions could be rectified before them being then sent out into the public domain, as is our current practice. And typically that allows from the date of a workshop to the date of the actual council meeting upwards of two weeks as at best, which I believe is sufficient time for any member of the public to respond. Any questions? So if you did want to change.
Mr. Chairman, this is my question on notice. Now, I haven't even spoken to it. You passed everything over to the general manager and you spoke to it yourself. You didn't even let me address this question of mine on notice. Can I ask you why?
Sorry, I thought that I had, if you want to.
No, you hadn't even asked me to speak on it. You handed it straight to the.
Procedures a little bit back to front, so apologies, certainly not intended to offend.
No, that's fine, but now I would like to explain why I put it on the agenda.
Please.
Right, thank you. We, as a council, we all decided, yes, until the minutes have been received by us, as you have just read out, but what is happening now, sometimes the end of the month, when Louise is ready to put up the agenda, she might be off on her day off. No worries there, but last Monday, just gone, when we had to put our motions or our questions on notice had to be into the council on the Monday night. Right, just gone, Monday, week back. Now, the minutes were not on the council website on Monday. So I got the phone call and had questions asked of me about the minutes. And now I know I can talk about, but what's happened at the meeting, that's fine. But I had to say, look, I'm sorry, you have to look at the minutes. And then they said, there are no minutes. I checked it up. The minutes weren't there. So then I looked at the issue that they had heard on the tape. The minutes weren't there. So then I looked at the issue that they had heard on the tape and said, well, you'll have to put your question on notice. And that's how that question got on notice. And that's how I got to really look at what was happening with the minutes of the last meeting. And the reason I put this question on notice is are we allowed to talk about it once the minute meeting's over and we've addressed the issues that are concerned? Well, the GM is saying, yes, we can, because it is on, on tape, but it's not visual, right? Not everyone likes to go and listen to the tape. The other one is why are the minutes not made available before the cutoff time of the applications to put any questions from the previous minute into the next agenda? So that's virtually what it's all about. Do I have to have a second of that?
Well, just a question.
Shane, over to you.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, that the, the resolution that stands at the moment doesn't prevent council from having those minutes on, made available to the public within the timeframes for them to be able to submit a question to council or a meeting on notice. You know, this may have happened in this occasion. It may have been an administrative error on this occasion, and I don't know, this is the first that I'm, I'm learning of it, I suppose. But if that was the case, it would be an error only. So in practice, if we are following a resolution at council, it still affords time for the public to be able to put a question on notice, having reviewed the unconfirmed minutes of council, if that's what the question.
Shane, I think that's reasonable. If you could just look into it and just examine whether there's an operational deficiency which occurred in this instance. But again, I am agreement that two weeks is, should be plenty of time for anybody to respond to the published minutes. All right. So we'll ask Shane to report back on that one for the collective council. Fair question, councillor Barwick.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, Mr. Mayor, just, just, just to tie off the answer to councillor Barwick's questions, the answer to number one is yes, and the answer to number two is yes, by way of motion of council.
That's what I believed and that's what I thought until I looked at a Monday week back and it was not on our website. So it may have been only a one off, but the question was asked, so that's why I've got it there. So I don't need, know that there needs to be anything into it, just make sure that when we, next month, that they are up on the webpage in time. If someone wants to complain about this, ask a question about this month's meeting. So they've got time to do it and they can't say that council is not giving them the right as a rate payer to put in a question on notice for a council meeting.
Thank you. The point is made. Thank you. All right, item seventeen is council committee reports. They're on nil this month. Item eighteen is to move into closed session. Do I have a mover for item eighteen point one to move? Councillor Dawson was first, Barrack Cliff was second. Thank you, councillor Dawson is our mover. Councillor Dawson.
Anything to say? Moving to closing.
Barrack Cliff, anything to add?
Let's move into closed session.
Thank you very much. Anybody, anything? Let's put it to a vote. All those in favor to move to closed session? There we go, unanimous. Thank you. We're moving it. The time is three thirty three. Shane, if you can please pause the recording at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor, confirming, confirming that we are now recording and move back into public.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The, the recording has been resumed. Councillor Harris, you have a question?
I move that we move out of the meeting altogether, close meeting.
We move to close the meeting. We have support from councillor Harris and seconded by councillor Barwick.
Excuse me, Mister Chairman, I thought in the, in the documentation that we have just finished, it says that the decision made in closed session, we weren't going to advise the public of our contract or have I closed it up too soon?
Through you, Mister Chair, yeah, the resolution of council does allow for them that, that information to be made public. It can be done in this forum or in other forums.
Correct. So are you saying that you, we, you are moving that we announce? I would prefer we did that through efficient channels.
No, that the decision made in closed session, which is what we've just done about the contract, be made public. And that's the only decision we made.
Look, I have, I have some personal reservations, having been a tenderer for public organizations. I think that it's appropriate. Again, I'm, I'm happy to swing against the tide there, but I think it's appropriate that you first engage the people who have tended as a courtesy before you make that publicly available.
Oh, that's what the local government act says. If you bring anything out of closed session, if we don't, it stays in closed session and never comes out to the people that we've tended it.
We certainly will be announcing who it's awarded to, but I just think as a professional courtesy for people who you should let them know when they have not been successful and give them some validation and feedback.
But I don't think that the way the act says, Mister Chairman, that you don't do it that way. All we're saying as a council, where we can, and you're saying this is who's won the tender, you would contact them before you put it to the public, but it takes it out of our role into the open.
Shane, do you want to just comment here? I kind of feel like you'd probably find there's a, a common sense procedure and we've got a bit of latitude.
Yeah, so thank you, Mister Mayor. So the resolution of council says releasing information contained within recommendation one as resolved by council for public view, which we will do in common practice. As you have highlighted, we'll do that once we have notified all those who tended for that process, both successful and unsuccessful. And we do that, then we'll do that through a number of ways. We do that through phone calls, letters, et cetera, to those that have tended. So we wouldn't release that information right now, would not be the practice that we would normally adhere to.
And it is, of course, a, without any shadow of a doubt, it is an operational matter. So the jurisdiction lies with the general manager and his team to make those phone calls, to inform those who have tended of the results and outcome upon which general manager will announce the successful bidder.
I've got to go, guys.
Bye. Mister Deputy, thank you. All right, agreed. Agreed. Okay, all good plus. In which case, we can then vote to move out of, close the meeting? Do we not need to vote to close the meeting? We just closed the meeting, don't we?
That's right.
We just closed the meeting. There you go. So the time now is four oh seven. And I'd like to thank all of the council, all of the council staff and all of those who are reviewing this reported broadcast of the Georgetown Council Meeting of the twenty eighth of July for your time and your interest. And we look forward to meeting again next month and moving our community forward. Thank you very much.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.